...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
There you go, Mr. Dodd.
Are there any citizen comments? We will have another time at the end of the meeting for citizen comments if you would. There's some green cards on the back. You can pick up your green card and we'll be glad to give you time if you have any comment. Next up is our school support services. Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped ahead, did I? We need to adopt the agendas recommended by superintendent. Is there a motion?
I have it.
Okay, motion by Ms. Powers to adopt the agendas recommended by the superintendent. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Okay. I will mention citizen comments again, I got ahead of myself. Anybody have citizen comments? Green card, okay. And now we'll go to item number three, school support services, Ms. Wain.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I ask the board's approval of the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the bulletin.
I need to approve instructional and support recommendations on the bulletin.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Counsel to approve the instructional and support recommendations on the bulletin. Is there any questions? Any comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion passes.
Nancy Simon, so I just can't vote to have that, so it'll still pass.
Okay. Second on the agenda is to ask approval of Kathy Androwski to be named Coordinator of Educational Technology with an effective date of July 1st, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to approve Kathy Androwski, Coordinator of Educational Technology, effective July 1st, 2018.
Form of motion, correct?
Yes, I thought I did, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve Kathy Androwski as a coordinator of educational technology, effective July 1st, 2018. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
I ask the board to approve Sean Furniss to be named Principal of Rock Pressure Elementary with an effective date of July 1st, 2018. Make a motion to accept Sean Furniss as Principal of Rock Pressure at the July 1st recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Counsel, second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve Sean Furniss as the Principal of Rock Pressure Elementary School, effective July 1st, 2018. Is there any comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Congratulations to both Ms. Androwski and Mr. Furniss. Thank you, Ms. Wain. Next up is Finance Sectioner Mike Mullen and Ms. Wilson here.
Good morning. I would like to ask approval of the Financial, Operational and Federal Single Audit Report of the Citrus County School District for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2017. I would like to note that there was no deficiencies in internal controls over the financial reporting that the audit also indicated. They audited the Title I program and that we materially complied with the requirements for the Title I program. And it was a very clean audit this year. I'm very proud of it, so I ask you to approve it.
With approval of the Financial, Operational and Federal Single Audit Report of the Citrus County School District. Oh boy, because fiscal year ended in 2017.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve our audit that's here before us. And I would like to say, I'd like to make a comment, this is a very strong, heavy audit and we should all be very proud of this type of financial document set that's placed before us. To know that we are, you know, watching out for the tax dollar, making sure that our systems in place allow us to have that, a clean audit like this, I mean, it's pretty impressive, really.
And it's an extremely extensive audit, as we all know. And, you know, we'd like to say this is, oh wow, this is great, they just do this every five years. You started, I believe, next year's audit already?
Yes, sir, we started. We had the entrance conference at the exit conference, so they have been, we are on an operational audit this year, we have that every three years on top of the financial audit. We just finished an FRS audit, we're having a Perkins audit right now, we went through an IRS audit earlier this year, so pretty much all the time.
Ms. Wilson, that's, that's just standard operating for government agencies. We're, we get audited all the time.
Yes, sir.
And it's to make sure that we are being good stewards, as Mr. Dodd said, of the taxpayers' money.
Yes.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, motion passes five zero. Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bradshaw. Okay. All right, any other business that comes before the school board? We are going to take this letter from Christ Community Church before we get to our school board comments. We'll give you time if you have updates for us. So we have a letter from Christ Community Church and Mr. Mullen, I'm going to turn it over to you as far as how you want to handle this.
This is board policy, if the church wants to exceed the one year that they've been in the, use the facility, the board has to approve it. So they're in the process, my understanding is, of building a new church, is that right, Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
So they've asked for an extension to go beyond that. And it's, we have done it before as a school district, but it's the board's decision on whether or not it can be approved at the school level.
Right. And I think Mr. Sullivan, Pastor Sullivan, Brian is here, so board members, if you would like to have Brian come to the front, we can talk to him, if not, we can, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm more than, I'm happy to hear Pastor come forward, but I just want to say this is not unusual for us. I can think of Reflections Church in Citrus Springs that's developed as a result of it, Seven Rivers Church, so I think this goes along with the idea that this is a community buildings and they're meeting all the guidelines, so I'm welcome to have them continue.
Yeah, we need a motion. I move that we accept an extension to Christ Community Church, subject to any legal addressings.
Which is our facility.
Okay. Just to extend then, the, accept the extension of Christ Community Church.
And just so the public understands, they pay to use that, it's not at the expense of the taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen.
They are paying for the use of that facility.
Yep. They're good stewards, too.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Ms. Counsel, to extend the facility use agreement from a 12-month period to Christ Community Church, we'll use it in the letter.
Thank you, yes, I appreciate that.
We all see here in the letter. Okay. So is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, motion passes five zero. Brian, thank you for coming in. If you want to, if you want to come up.
Come on up.
Come on up and say a word or two, you will, we want to give you the opportunity.
Sure. I'd just like to say, we appreciate this school system, the school board, for all your service to our community as well. And it's been a privilege to rent your facility, and so we're excited. We want to move out as soon as possible as well, so we were able to purchase a piece of property this year. We're moving along with the building process, so we're getting sort of part of the rezoned, certain things done, and so we're excited. And so we just want to say, on behalf of Christ Community Church, thank you so much for allowing us to rent your facility and made it possible for us to proceed, so, and just know that we're praying for you, praying for the school system, praying for our students and our faculty, so thank you very much.
It's test time, too, so if you can pray for the test, too.
All right. Brian, thank you for coming in. Okay, now we'll go to any updates and Mr. Mullen, is there anything for you?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Powers, Ms. Counsel.
Just wrapping up the last of the SACS meetings and Tom and I attended the awards for the Pre-Sugar Health Academy and watched Diane Holmes retire. And met somebody who's waiting to apply for her job, so we'll see her on the bulletin.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yep, I'm good.
I'm good as well. Okay. With that, I will adjourn the special meeting. Members, does anyone need a break, or can we get right into the workshop?
Let's go.
All right. We'll open the, our workshop, and we have five topics on here today. We'll start with Renaissance Center, Sermon, Annual Update. Mike Beznik is here, I see.
Obviously, I have our Assistant Principal, Ms. Rash, here with us, and I thought we have a quick kind of State of the Union address for how things are going. We have, you should have, I don't know if you've got copies of PowerPoint or not, but we can, we can read along with it as we go. As you can see, this first graph indicates our average daily attendance, and I have to tell you that when I came before you four years ago, this was a, this was a statistic that I thought would really impact. I thought we'd be in the 90s, we'd go in bus, we'd take the buses, rent kids homes and different things like that, and we just haven't gotten there yet. And it's not for lack of working on it. This was a, this was something that I thought we would really be able to impact for those Renaissance kids, and for some reason, a lot of them just don't want attendance on a regular basis. And I think part of it is that they're behind and then they get sent to an alternative school and they're not, and we're not doing a good enough job getting our focus into them when they first start. We've got to do better at trying to get them to see that there is a way out. This was a statistic that, again, I thought we would really be able to impact, and it just hasn't gotten to the level that we thought it would be yet. We're still working on it, we're still working on different things like orientation and parental involvement, things like that, to try to get kids up to come to school. It's, it's something, it's frustrating because I know once the kids get to our school, they will benefit from the services that we have to offer, the counseling, the education, the rapport that we build with the students, just getting them in on a regular basis has been an issue for us. And it's been a small percentage of those kids that we haven't been able to reach, and I'll show you maybe on the next slide, the average daily membership. Now, obviously, for this school year, I can tell you that that number's 119 as of Friday, so we have built a population where more and more kids are coming every year, more and more kids are getting referred to as we've added the ESC, the extra ESC slots. And so I anticipate by the end of the year, we'll be pretty close to our capacity, which is 138, or if I were 119 on Friday. The next is the number of kids released to zone school, and I think we've served more kids this year than we have any other year, but as you can see by the graph, we've barely, and we have an end of the year release yet to do, so that number will go up. However, that number of kids that over the four-year time have been with us in and out on a regular basis and have not gotten out due to attendance, due to not wanting to change their behavior, not, not wanting to adhere to our program rules, things like that, that number seems to be growing. And we've got to find a way to get those, I call repeat offenders, or the kids that keep coming in and keep not doing what they're supposed to do onboard, because it does impact not only the kids that are there trying to get out, but it impacts the overall performance as, as attested to by our statistics, but also those kids need help and we're not able to help a certain percent of. I think that if we can find the people to execute the plan that we want to, that will be impacted. Right now, we're having a little bit of trouble with staffing, and just like everybody else, we're short a teacher, we're short a parent. I think if we ever got fully staffed, I think that would be able to be positively impacted as well. The next one.
Is that trend, Mr. Beznik, is that trending the same that you're seeing in your program in Marion County?
Yes, yes. Attendance is down in our programs in Marion County and also the number of qualified individuals when we, when we run advertisements, and we do year-round recruiting through teacher to teacher.
And I meant more the trend with the students staying there longer and not going back to their schools.
Marion County has an outlaws at our program. If they've been there for such a long time, we, because otherwise we would go well over capacity, what we do in Marion County is there's a recommended, non-recommended, and after the kids have been there so long that they're released, non-recommended, put on a behavior contract, sent back to their regular school, and then most of those kids end up coming back to us, but they do get an opportunity, I guess, if they're not comfortable in the, in the alternative setting to go back. I, I like it here better because I think it sets, it, it makes the kids understand that they have to do something. All the research would say that doing time anywhere is not productive. And so sometimes in Ocala, the kid's basically just doing time. If he stays out long enough, he'll get to go back, non-recommended, won't really have to do anything. You know, here, they have to do something to get back, which I think in the long run is teaching more lessons, teaching more, more things about life, because if you don't do anything in life, you won't get anything back. And, and so I, I like it, I like the way Citrus County does it. We haven't gotten to a point where we're so full, we can't take new students. In Marion County, if those kids stayed, we would probably be over our capacity. So, this next number is the one that, that we're really proud of. Those are the number of students that have returned over the four-year history, and only 44 of them have gone back to base school. So obviously, we'd like for that to be 100%. We're in the mid-80s. So it does tell me that if the kids will come in and cooperate and get the services that we have to offer and do the things we want them to do, then they can go back to regular school and behave. Now, this is a very fluid number. There might be two more of those kids getting in trouble this morning in a regular school, I don't know, but we're probably, the end of the year, we'll probably release around 20 kids, that's usually what we do every year, and right now, we're sitting at 44 of them, we'll be almost three hundred kids released. So if they'll come in and do what we want them to do, what we ask them to do, and they'll apply themselves, and then go back to school, they can be successful. And that's probably the most, the best statistic that you'll see during this presentation. The out-of-school suspension days are maintaining. We had a, a little bit, a few more last year, we're back down this year. We don't like to out-of-school suspend. Some things, we need to send a message, most of the time, we'll try to do after-school detail or get the parents involved in something where they can be a punishment or a consequence for their actions, but that number is, but staying relatively the same as, as the last year was a little bit higher. The counseling hours, and this is through April, as you can see, this is just OCP, there's also the Centers, and there's also Aspire that do group work and counseling work, but this is our, our provider. They've completed 71 intakes, they've had over 250 individual work sessions, and they've had 485 group work sessions, for the total of counseling of 738. And we put as many kids that need it and as possible into those groups of individual counseling. The due process kids that you send are seen by the Centers, so there's also another group of kids that, that have substance abuse with that group. And then we also have Aspire that's there quarterly, doing groups for the relationship building and the relationship skillset, and we've just started a relationship with Filter. They have a group of kids and parents that are doing things on Monday and Saturday, a group of our kids only, and most of the time, the parents have been going, which is, which is positive, because we've given them some real difficult cases with middle school kids and early high school kids, and that seems to be, because they get their ride time on Saturday based upon the parent getting there on Monday, and then based upon how well they do in our program very often. So it's kind of coordinated and working real well with some of our tougher kids, and we've seen them show up a little bit more often, and we've seen them behave a little bit more often, because they really want to ride their motorcycles on Saturday, so it seems to have worked pretty well. Just, that's the presentation as far as the statistics. I have a couple of other things I wanted to touch on. Obviously, a real positive for, for us in this community is the district partnership. I mean, from superintendent to deputy superintendent, all the way to transportation, HR, maintenance, staff, I mean, we just get treated well, and we feel like it's true partnership to try to take care of kids. Everybody is on our side as far as doing what, what we need to do to try to help these kids, so we really feel, really feel positive about that. We, we believe that the ESC services and the, the more ESC kids we're serving now has been a real plus for the students as well. I think with Christina and Ms. Vernon, our principal, and their ESC backgrounds, and Ms. Greco, and Ms. Kirby, and the ESC office, we feel like we're giving really good care for those ESC students. We're better able to handle the services they need. We think that's a positive, because we feel like we have quite a few diagnosed and undiagnosed ESC kids, and we're working very hard to try and get them the services they need to be successful. And the amount of cooperation that we're receiving right now from law enforcement and the community, especially the court system, has been outstanding. Our new resource officer's done a fantastic job making sure we're staying safe. The courts and us have gotten a relationship where the JPOs and the judges are working hard to make sure the kids are coming to school. We give reports when they go back to court on how well they're doing. Team court, Ms. Greber and us work closely, on who's in, who's out, who's in our school. So we feel like those are all positives that allow us to be successful and give every student the best possible chance of being successful, and that's really what's important. A couple of the negatives are our staffing situation. We are short teachers, we are short paras on a regular basis, the pool is just not very deep as far as when we ask for applicants and try to get people in. One of the things our board has set aside is money. And so if anybody comes in needing to take their certification test, needing to take classes to get certified, any of those tests that they may need to take, we're going to pay them. And, and that includes finishing degrees for some people, it includes taking other collegiate classes. We've got a fund set aside just to try to get those people to finish what they need to do so they can be viable members of our staff, and the more highly qualified members of our staff. I'm going to get with Ms. Wain and see if we can't figure out if there's some people that the district's bypassing, and I'm going to sort a few of those things, and let them come to us and see if we can help them put the money sign of getting certified and getting all the things that they need to do. Because it's a real concern. It's, it's as big a concern as we have as a company, because we have the same problems that are other facilities. We can't start getting people in that can execute our plan with fidelity, then we're going to have a hard time staying visible. And so we need to find some people to go and work with. It's one thing to have the heart to work with the kids, it's another thing to have the credentials, and we're kind of having trouble finding a little bit of both lately. The other, the other negative that we have is the parental support and trying to get people onboard with, we're trying to get their students to change, and I know you guys aren't strangers to that, but we haven't found the magic solution to get the parents onboard with what we want them to do, whether it's if not their kids for an after-school, whether it's believing when we tell them that, yes, your student did do this, and we'd like to punish or form, somehow it was our fault or your fault for sending them there or something like that. So we, we haven't found, we haven't found the magic solution to that yet, and, and that's something that, to really get change, to stick, and to have change be long-term, it's going to be the parents are going to drive that train when their kids leave us and they go back to school and do the things they need to be successful.
Mike, one partner that I didn't hear you mention was our business community, because some of your kids are old enough to work, and they, you know, they don't see the real world sometimes in the classroom, and I wonder how, have you partnered with any of our employers? I know, I know some of the kids are not employable.
Yeah.
But, but it would be nice if they could see where they had to be a couple of years from now, if they really were going to turn into productive citizens.
And I think, yeah, I think we're there. We, we help a lot of our older kids, like we have probably a half dozen kids that leave school and go to work. And we've helped the Burger Kings and the Publix, the Wendy's, the different places. So we've got some kids that are on board, and some of the local restaurants are great. In fact, one, one of our students that, we got, there's a country club down in Sugar Mill, but one of our kids, they work in the desk, he gets, and he walks in in the morning, I'm like, how late did you work? And he's like, oh, you know, he's out late working. So there's jobs out there for the kids, and we try to help them get it, but I, I like your idea. Most of our population is middle school heaven, so it's a little bit early to start working too much with those kids. But the high school kids, we try, if they have the, the transportation, the ways to get to work, we try to help them as best we can. I have some connections with Publix and the local restaurant industry, we try to use us as references, especially when a kid's doing a great job. And a lot of our high school kids, most of them really want to get back to high school and want to graduate.
Publix is good. I had a couple of my kids that worked in the deli, but Publix paid for their tuition down at University of South Florida.
Yeah.
They came back up every weekend, and so Publix is very, very good to all of our kids, so.
Yeah, they, they can be, if, if the employee comes in and does a good job.
So maybe you could just celebrate those kids that are doing a good job at Burger King or Publix and those, and then pass that celebration down to the middle school kids, maybe you could shine a light.
Yeah, definitely. And, and I, and I would love to, to get some of our, some of our high school kids, you know, doing some other things. I think visiting some vocational programs, getting them to some, some job pairs and things like that, I think that's something we can do. They're just coming to us with such deficits credit-wise, that we're spending a lot of our time just working for that credit recovery and trying to get them back to where they can go ahead and go off. It's a great idea. We, we do it in Marion County, we're part of the youth bill thing and all, and all that stuff over there, and it really does make them have a sense of pride, a sense of community when they're put there involved.
And one thing about our community is we're blessed with a bunch of retired people that really do a good job with our kids.
Yeah.
They mentor and.
Everybody wants to seem to help, and I think that's the biggest positive. I wish we, I wish we were doing better and executing the plan better than we want to, but everybody wants to help. So that's, that's a positive for us.
Mike, you mentioned you're still struggling to try and get that 80% number of attendance, daily attendance up, and my, my question really is, I, I thought we were, you're still above or right about where we were traditionally anyway. I know you had a higher threshold, and I'm thrilled with that.
You're both worth it, though.
I was just going to say.
But, but I mean, the.
And, and I appreciate that you, because I know you have always said 90% was, was your starting goal, you're still going to be striving for that.
Yeah.
You know, there's, I know, we, I'm just saying, we know that that challenge, because we've struggled with it.
Right.
And I don't want to get lost to say, listen, just because you've been at the 80% mark, that doesn't say that that's actually been successful in its own right.
Okay.
So, and again, I want to get to that 90. Mentors, Ms. Ms. Counsel just mentioned it, and you talked about different things, mentor still seems to be, we could talk about, if we can just find one adult that will take on one of our kids, it will make a huge difference. And, and I know the mentor that probably the Renaissance student needs is someone who is going to be quite straight with them, that, you know, is, you know, maybe comes out of the real world in a very real sense.
Sure.
But has, have you found, I mean, I'm thinking, you know, for example, we just had one faith-based group in here a little bit ago. I wonder if that in particular, some of those, you know, retired, you know, men that have said, listen, I know what you guys have gone through, I've been that kid.
Yeah.
That's, I think, you know, who we need to also reach out to, to say, listen, I'm going to be here next week, and I'm going to find out where you're at type, you know, situation. Because I think when they feel like someone has accountability of them, I know that makes a difference, and you guys can't do it alone.
Right.
There's got to be someone on the outside.
Well, and Ms. Alagretta came up with a great plan where there's a certain group of people that are waiting on those kids when they get back to regular school, and serving as mentors, and I think that's helped our recidivism number greatly by, by those people, knowing who they are, identifying them as coming back, welcoming, welcoming them back. And the same thing you said, I would love to find some adults that would come in and kind of track with these kids and become, become a big brother, big sister type person for them, because there's, there's the reliable people in their lives sometimes are waiting. And, and, and not that, that everybody's not trying, it's just that they've got their own set of circumstances that they're dealing with.
And you know, one way to. And you know, one way to get some of those groups in, don't forget the School Advisor Enhancement Council that you have, which is kind of really part of your local board type representation. That's a place to, you know, assign one of those business people, you know, to say, one of those church leaders, those faith-based ones, to say, listen, you know what, come, start coming to our meetings, start coming, recognizing what our challenges are so maybe you can come up with some additional help.
Yeah. One of the things when we sit down at the end of the year meetings, one of the things we're really pushing is the parental involvement and more community involvement and people getting on to the work and trying to help kids. There's some days you're really difficult to want to help. And most of the time though, that you can see that they need help and so, and as long as you're consistent and there for them, they usually will respond to that, but there's some that definitely won't. So, and that's with when we do our end of the year planning, one of the things we're really pushing, even with the $100, one of the things we're really pushing is parental involvement. Because we have to wait so hard at the end of the year to do that parental involvement stuff so we can impact more kids and more families. It's kind of a catch-22. At the beginning of the semester, we don't really have a lot of kids and by the end we do. So we try to do parental involvement stuff at the end. But those are all great suggestions and I'd love to have mentors. I can think of 12 right off the bat. And that's, that's where we brought in Filter really because that group has been serving as mentors to those kids and seeing them outside of our age.
How is the search policy going for you guys now?
Um, you know, it's been pretty good. I think initially we ran into some resistance, but we've got it kind of down now to where everybody just kind of expected and they still him and all a little bit when they get there, why we got to do this, but they all do it and, and we've got it down to about 20 minutes so to get everybody through, 2025, depending on traffic, rain. I'm sure everybody's late this morning because I went through a really bad storm on the way here, so. But yeah, I think for the most part, I think it gives a sense of home to some of the kids. It really does. I don't, you know.
Feel more secure.
Yeah, I really do believe that that hasn't been that big of an issue.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Thank you.
Appreciate everything you guys do for us and, and obviously gratitude to the district for being such a great partner and for all of you for showing up and coming out and visiting.
We appreciate you.
Please do that anytime. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Oh, one other thing. And I hate to do this in a public setting, but we're really going to miss Ms. Regina. And she has been. She has been fantastic through our four and a half or five-year run and I almost feel like that we need to drag her to a SAC meeting or put her on. I know she's going to be overseas all the time, but I just want to, I just wanted to tell you all what a great ambassador she's been for your district and what a great help she's been for us as we come here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next topic is the policy review.
Good day.
Let's fix it there a little bit.
Yeah, I would never say.
Sir, good morning.
Good morning.
And we have four policy items for review today. The first one is virtually a rewrite of 3.90 regarding charter schools. These changes were due to a variety of statutory changes over a period of time and the new policy's five pages, the old one's 18 pages, so that's good news. But Ms. Crowell is here if you have any specific questions about the provisions of the new language.
They may be more general on this one. I stopped on page two or five of the new one before proving and denying any application. I thought, okay, where's, where's the guideline? And then I went to page 10 of 18 of the old one and they just took all that stuff out. So are they giving more latitude to the school boards with charter schools coming in and more local discretion?
I think the reason for that and talking to our consultant is to try to make it more general so that we can adapt to the changes as they occur in the guidelines so we don't have everything specifically in the policy.
I noticed that. Okay with me.
But the problem is the contract still, I think, specifies very little that we can dictate. So at the same time, it's kind of moot. And then of course now, you've got to remember constitutional revision, the council has an amendment there that is, could take all of that away.
Yeah. It's seen that before. It's more liberal for the charter schools.
Yeah.
More strictly for.
That's what I, that's what I'm seeing.
Well, good cause, I think is the key word here.
Any other questions? The next item is provision to policy 4.21, selection and management of instructional materials. This one was just heard of policy informs last week. There again, this is a rewrite to address changes in statutes primarily, the, some of the committee requirements and who can challenge materials has been expanded somewhat in the new policy. And Dr. Gaddis is here if you have any questions regarding the selection of education materials.
I guess some people come in to really read the materials very carefully and gave some super suggestions. So I'm very pleased with that. I'd like us to continue to read and comment on what is in the new materials that are coming in.
Concern I think though that we still keep facing, and I don't know that this legislative session, they went all as far as they wanted to, but is that they want to make not just the textbook adoptions, but any pretty much material that teachers use, they want approval or they want to be able to force that to have a full review of a board and appeal to the board. And that's really what we have administrators for. I think Mr. Monahan would remind me that if we were doing that, we would spend hours a day just reviewing official materials for every time a teacher pulls something out. But there is a process currently. There's always a process. If a parent is uncomfortable with the material, where they question the material, there's a process that they have. And so again, I'm frustrated where we're continually legislating to the classroom because we do have a process. If somebody has an issue, it can absolutely go through an addressing and it can go all the way to the superintendent, which is really the person who's going to ultimately control that classroom decision, so.
And the materials also, I mean, the library materials, any material.
Yeah.
So it can be very complicated because we usually just think of it as a textbook or.
Yep.
It was something tactical, but it means library materials, newspapers, whatever.
I think it's very appropriate that Fahrenheit 451 has a brand-new series right now that's coming out because that's about what we're talking about.
The third item is revision to policy 5.40 regarding student attendance. This deletes statute 39.01773C and adds 1,000.21, which is system-wide definitions. And also it adds administrative code, pupil attendance records, 6A1.044. And this just inserts the A through C in section one. And Ms. Alagretta's here if you have any questions regarding this. And this again was due to the new statute. Finally, the next one was actually, came up through the Food Services Department. This is a new policy, 5.57, student dietary needs to address the need to approve and track special dietary arrangements for students. And this was a collaborative effort between Food Services and Student Services. So Carnival's here as well as Food Services to answer any questions about the need for this particular policy. And we basically took some other policy language from some other districts and wordsmithed it into our own policy.
I do have a question on that. I know family members allergic to tomatoes. So when I go shopping, I read every single can to see what's in. When I was reading this, I was wondering, how does one deal with an allergy like that? It's not a, just a simple allergy, it's one that you have to carry one of the shots around with you in case you get tomatoes.
We'll let Mr. Postoni address that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm bringing our dietitian, Kelly Niblet. Kelly handles all of this.
Anytime we get a notification from a physician saying that a child has a severe allergy, whether it be tomatoes, whether, you know, whatever the case may be, nuts, we make sure that it is, we have an alert on our system and then I create special menus for that child so, and which is active registered so they know what a child can have and can't have. So we make sure that every child has the appropriate diet and the alerts that come up as they're coming through.
And I notice by reading all these cans all the time, that if you have the word spices at the top of the list, and it could very well be tomatoes.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
But if they're at the bottom of the list, very unlikely that's the general rule. So you all have to go through all that.
Every single one.
It's been forever, so it must really take you forever.
You know, after a few years, you kind of start getting really familiar with the ingredient one. And so, you know, tomatoes is an unusual one. We really, we do focus on the big eight, you know, and even we have a program out there on nutrislice.com where you can get the menus, you can go ahead and filter out the allergies there and it'll show you right online. When we start getting to multiple allergies or, you know, stranger allergies such as tomatoes and the tomato products or something like cinnamon, then we do a lot of label reading to make sure that child is safe. We do a lot of connection with, you know, parents or caregivers to make sure that we have the clarification that it is indeed severe enough that we have any trace of tomato, anything that they cannot have, let's say in that instance, versus just not having like tomatoes or marinara sauce or something like that. So there's, there's varying degrees that we talk with parents as well as physicians.
And I think there are many students in the system who have the unusual allergies. We all know about peanuts, but the unusual ones.
Unusual ones, I would say over 100.
That's a lot.
Yes, it is.
Where we used to have just a few allergies several years ago has increased tenfold, tenfold.
How do you suppose that is?
The resistance to certain things around, I mean, it's hard for me to comment because you'll get all types of people say it's because of antibiotics.
Modified foods.
Whatever's going on, but it's hard to pinpoint all of that. But our goal here is to be able to address any issues that a student might have. And if I can add one more thing, USDA tells us we have to make modifications if a child is on a 504 or an IEP, okay? However, others, it's reasonable accommodations, if it's reasonable. Well, if a child has an allergy to wheat, let's say, well, just about all our products, because they want the whole grain, is going to have some type of wheat in it. But because we have somebody like Kelly Niblet, okay, we are able to address just about every issue that a child comes to us with and make modifications to his diet. I can't say that about every school district. So that again shows you why Citrus County, and I'm biased, if you're darn right I am, because I've worked in other districts, is a cut above any school district.
We have several gluten-free kids.
And do we, do we let the teachers know, like for class parties and stuff like that?
Absolutely.
Do the teachers know? Okay, good.
Absolutely.
Are you not scared thinking about that?
No, and if there's any issue, if there's any issue with a child having, you know, in the cafeteria that they're having issues, the child doesn't want to follow the diet, child tries to sneeze food, child just cries, you know, something like that, we certainly, we then get with the principal and make sure we connect with the parents. I mean, we do full circle to ensure that everybody's in the same loop. We do have a specialized dietary form. It's an annual form that can be filled out. The top part is from the parents, bottom part, the physicians or, you know, practitioners fill out. And that's currently, we're changing it because one of the issues was being we needed more clarification of orders. So we've changed the physician section and we've worked on it in the policy informs committee and we had some questions come up. So we're looking to finishing that up and getting some answers on some of the questions that arose. So that form will now be with, you know, anybody can have a copy of that form that has that child.
Pam, do you want to add anything?
With the notifications, when the nurses do find out through either a parent or the student's emergency card that there are some kind of dietary allergies, they not only notify Food Services as well as they notify the nurses, but the nurses do met alerts to the teachers. And that's beginning of the school year for when a student's new and at the high schools, middle schools, quarterly because they change classrooms, they do a met alert that informs the teachers what the allergies are. But we have always in the past worked very closely with Food Services regarding these students because sometimes they get notified first and sometimes we get notified first, but it's always been a team effort. And anything in this policy or on that form is really something we hadn't already been doing, it just wasn't in writing before. So we're just kind of clearing things up and writing for that, so.
And I think even with reward activities, I know both of your departments are very involved at making sure that they meet certain standards that's required and that they are informed. Because I know I've been to reward parties where it'll be, you know, no peanuts, no, you know, and your people have made sure that information got out, which I just thought we were having a reward party. I didn't realize how much work went into ensuring the safety of students, so.
And that's important because you're at restaurants and you tell a person I'm allergic to, you can't count on the fact that it's not going to be in your food. I remember I was sitting at a table with someone that had an allergy to vinegar and he went almost into convulsions because they told him no vinegar in this. Well, there was vinegar in it and that was scary. They just answered.
And I don't see people generally, like people realize how severe an allergy can be. You could say I'm allergic to this and it makes me itch a little bit versus I'm allergic to this and the minute you speak to me after you ate something I'm allergic to, my throat can close. So there are varying levels of allergies. And when either of us has gotten, I've gotten calls from parents saying, I want the school to be peanut-free. Well, it's hard when you have 1,500 kids in a school to eliminate every peanut because as a mother who doesn't have a child that has an allergy and doesn't have any medical background, you're not going to think every morning we need to make that student your peanut-free sandwich because it's only thing they like to eat, you know? But we talked about peanut-free tables, cleaning up between peanuts. We try to work with everybody on an individual basis, trying to make sure that each student is safe. It'd be very hard to police a 15,000-plus school district to be totally allergy-free. So it's very individual for each student, trying to keep everybody safe and just a constant effort between the two departments.
And that's amazing, 15,000 a day. I want to work with.
I appreciate it.
Oh, gosh.
I'm still amazed at the breakfast menu you've put out for next month testings. It's like one of the finest restaurants in the country.
Pamela, did you say peanut-free tables? Do we have those?
We do at some schools.
I didn't realize that, that's excellent.
Not every school, I mean, just.
Right, if there was a need to have that.
Yeah, one school might, one school has like 16 EpiPens and one school has no EpiPens. It just depends on the year and where. And if we find a child is that highly allergic, then yes, we will come up with a plan to make sure that they're not exposed to their allergens, so.
That's excellent.
Great job, that's something that, tremendous job. Tremendous.
Okay, thank you all very much. So that concludes our policy review. The form will come back to the board, but we're getting it all squared away so we can identify all the different allergens. Does anybody have any further questions?
Thank you.
Okay, good day. All right.
All right, if you don't mind, I think we would like to take a break, so let's do a five-minute break and we'll resume at 10:05.